Let's start. Good afternoon. I am Heo Won Seo from Jeju National University and currently serve the role of Executive Editor of NC. The first talk will be given by Professor Kyung Hun Kim from Songgyunggwan University. Title of the talk is Composite membranes for water treatment.
Good afternoon. I'd like to quickly introduce myself. My name is Kyung Hun Kim, Associate Professor in Department of Mechanical Engineering at Songgyunggwan University, Korea. Before starting my presentations, I'd like to say thank you very much for this outstanding paper of work. I didn't expect to receive this. I am deeply honored to receive this award. I accept it on behalf of co-authors. I'd like to give special thanks to editorial committees of Nanocombogens for having this university to nominate me. And I really feel honored to have opportunity to speak in Nanocombogens' special session. So today, I'm going to talk about composite membranes for water treatment. Water is the most precious resources on earth. Water contamination has become a major global environmental problem since its effects directly influence the human and other living systems. Rapid growth of global populations, climate change, and industrial development has affected water quality. It causes freshwater crisis worldwide. The picture shows the source and pathways of pollution. The types of aquatic pollutants include floating debris, organic and inorganic materials, toxic metals, synthetic compounds, oil, radioactive pollutions, pathogens, biological pollutants, and so on. The various polluters significantly contribute to freshwater depletions. Many people have tried to remediate the contaminants affected environments from industrial activities and human waste, especially for aquatic environment. But to solve this issue, it is very important to reuse water resources by utilizing water purification technologies among several ways to treat wastewater. So membrane technology has emerged as an ideal technology for reclaiming water. During last period case, the membrane-based technologies have been concerned and expanded significantly. The development of membrane technology is considered as a significant history, which is developed from 1748 to now according to various structures, functions, and purpose for its preparation approach. So membrane technology has emerged as an efficient technique over conversion methods due to its high removal ability, low energy consumption, easy operations, and cost-effectiveness production of clean water and wastewater treatment. There are many strategies to be developed for removing pollutants in waters. For example, chemical precipitation, ion exchanges, electrolysis, reverse osmosis, coagulation, ultrafiltrations, nanofiltration, microfiltration, absorption, especially in absorptions. The absorb-based materials can absorb pollutants in solutions via physical or chemical interactions. Since its simplicity, effectiveness, and possibility, absorption has become one of the most important strategies for the pollutant remover. However, there are still some challenges for the absorptions. There are several issues. Slowly, high internal diffusion resistance in observants, and others. So membrane absorption technologies appeared in the 1980s. In the process, the separated pollutants are absorbed in the membranes, and contaminants contain the solutions via through the pores of the membranes. It shows high flow rates, low internal diffusion resistance, and fast absorption rates. Absorption occurs in the separation-based normal membrane. It induces membrane fouling and reduces membrane performance. The absorptive membranes catered with a special absorptive function. Other understanding for water treatment by absorptive membranes: The general principle of a membrane is based on absorption and separation. Absorption and membrane separation are efficient approaches for water treatment. Absorption can be defined as the accumulation of substances or materials at an interface between solid substance and bathing solution. Absorption occurs at an interface when solid molecules establish interactions with the substrate without establishing covalent bonds. So in case of absorption approach, membrane is made by connecting functional groups to the surface and pore wall of polymer membranes. The target pollutants selectively absorbed to the functional group. Functional active binding sites will combine with the target pollutants, remove pollutants in water with a high absorption rate and capacity when polluted water flows through the membrane because of the very short contact distance at a sub-microscale level between target pollutants or active binding site of the membranes. So the chemical features of both compounds and as prepared membranes play an important role for preparation process of membranes and absorption technique. Next is separation approach. So generally, membrane separation process is a method that uses pores in the membrane to filter and makes use of membranes of selective permeability that creates certain substances in wastewater. Membrane separation is used for treatment of dying wastewater mainly based on membrane pressure such as reverse osmosis, ultrafiltrations, nanofiltrations, and microfiltration. This depends on structural morphology of membranes. The morphological structure of membranes is significantly important factors. This impacts to pollutant remover performance in the absorption process. In addition to the specific absorption groups on membranes, the morphology of membranes is also needed to concern remover efficiency for pollutants from order. So theoretically, thin membrane with greater pore size is favorable for the operation of high fluss and low pressure as required by membranes. Generally, membranes can be classified into inorganic membranes, polymeric membranes, and composite membranes. So for inorganic membranes, it consists of main inorganic materials, clay alone or combined clay and metals, metal oxides, can be used. The advantage of these membranes is low-cost materials used as well as easy preparation and regeneration compared to polymeric membranes. However, its advantages can mainly relate to less selection of materials as well as low removal ability and structural stability. For polymeric membranes, the polymeric membrane materials are main substances. Polymeric membranes can contain one or more compounds to form polymeric membranes using in situ polymerization, copolymerization, or blending. Of course, there are lots of selection of materials, low-cost friendly materials as well as high structural stability. They have a limitation of summer stability compared to the inorganic membranes as well as it takes a long time to remove pollutants in waters. Compared to typical membrane, the nano-material incorporated polymer membranes can be named as composite membranes. There are lots of preparation approaches of composite membranes, including blending, mixing, dry casting, dry casting, wet casting, coating. So however, its preparation process is quite complicated compared to the inorganic and polymeric membranes. Composite membranes has lots of advantages. For examples, improved test features, numbers, numerous selections of materials, high structural stability, improved removal rates, reduce the flow resistance. So many researchers have successfully fabricated various composite membranes for water treatment until now. So composite materials is a combination of two materials with different physical and chemical properties. They are used to create a material to improve the properties of their base materials. They consist of polymer matrix and nanofilters. The unique structure and surface characteristics of nano-materials such as carbonaceous materials, metal oxide, nanoparticles, so we can use them as effective nanofilters assisted in polymeric materials for water treatment. For carbonaceous materials such as carbon nanotubes, active carbon, and graphene, they are known as potential counterparts in polymer-based composites because they have high aspect ratio, mechanical strength, durability of carbon matrix with polymer structures, and strong interactions and adhesion. Yeah, this is named as carbon-assisted composite membrane. In another case, the use of meta- and metal oxide nanoparticles or metal organic framework mold into polymeric materials is promising preparation approaches for composite membranes. They can provide potential advantages for high absorption and separation processes. So this is named as metametal oxide particles assistive composite membranes. However, the carbonaceous materials and metal oxide mold can be combined each other and can be incorporated in polymeric materials to make desirable composite membranes. Composite membranes containing nanofilters have been extensively applied for separation, water purification, and reuse observant. Their wide applications relate significantly to the stability of selected nanofilters in practical applications. In this case, names of nanofilters are different. As shown in schematics, it summarizes the stability of nanofilters under different conditions for their better selection in targeted separation. It means the water stability of nanofilters is the first concern for the applications in water treatment. Some nanofilters are easy to hydrolyze when exposed to aqueous environment or even water vapor in the shop tanks. It causes a class of original structures. So besides, the composite membranes normally employed at a defined pressure, this requires the mechanical stability of nanofilters. So nanofilters should be stable at the applied pressures as well as the durability of nanofilters must be ensured because it is an important factor of long-term stability of a composite membrane. So carbon-based nanofilters, crystalline inorganic nanofilters and inorganic composite nanofilters are highly stable in various aqueous solutions. Whereas meta, metal oxide, silica is the nanofilters and inorganic composite nanofilters are not stable in acid-based environment. The case of amorphous organic nanofilters is not stable in chemical and survey environment. In composite membranes, a functional layer of a membrane is presented to enhance absorption ability. According to the position of this membrane, the composite membranes can be divided to surface composite membranes and sandwiched composite membranes. More specifically, the case of a surface composite membranes, this layer placed on the surface which can contact with the polluted solution electrically. It makes absorption rates improve. These membranes can be fabricated by in situ preparation, surface bonding, the surface deposition, surface correcting, and surface molecular imprinting methods. So in case of sandwiched composite membranes, composite membranes will exist between the support layer and surface layer. Since a symmetric structure of the surface layer, the polymer solution of the surface layer can penetrate into micro pores of substrate and enhance the strength and stability as well as which can avoid clogging of the membrane by small scale particles. So depending on the purpose, the structure of composite absorptive membranes can be fabricated. With composite absorptive membrane with the high absorption and separation abilities using for water treatment, it significantly relates to chemical functions and structural morphology contained in the whole of a membrane structure. It means the efficient remover ability of composite membranes and not only specific functional groups to observe pollutant molecules but also physical pores, or piece traps to seal the pollutant molecules contained in all of the membrane structure. Therefore, these are important factors to probably design composite membrane for water treatments. The good and stable interactions between compounds, the polymers, and nano-materials as membrane are important for regeneration and durability. This picture shows examples of absorptive membrane applications. So composite absorptive membranes with the use of a polydopamine PDA, so zeolite emitters ray framework ZI or MOP, metal organic framework. So graphene oxide, polyelectrolyte complex nanoparticles and graphene oxide manganes chloride, GMA, showed removal ability of heavy metal ions and organic dye molecules from water through absorption and separation approaches. The design strategy of composite absorptive membranes serving as building blocks, defense, for style of death ability for specific water treatment and environmental remediation. Two more is understanding. I will go to general absorption mechanisms of composite membranes. As known, in 1881, the term absorptions was firstly introduced by Heinrich Kehlers, a German physicist. Absorption is a mass transport process which involves accumulation of substances at the interface of two phases such as liquid to liquid, gas to liquid, gas solid, liquid solid interface. The substance being absorbed is the observant and observing materials is the observant. If the interaction between the solid surface and observed molecules has a physical nature, process is called is absorption. In this case, attractive interactions are bound by forces. On the other hand, if the attractive forces between observed molecules and solid surface due to the chemical bonding, it called is process chemisorption. The general mechanism of pollutant absorption consists of three steps during the process of a water treatment. The first, the diffusion of pollutant molecules observed present in the water solutions can be onto the material-based observant surface. The second, the pollutant absorption on the composite membrane-based observant surface is based on the molecular interactions. It is a film diffusion. The third, the diffusion of pollutant molecules can be moved from the surface to the inside of the composite membrane-based observant. So it is surface diffusion or pore diffusion. The absorption process is considered as a better alternative in water and wastewater treatment because of convenience, ease of operations, and simplicity of design. So we can apply absorption process for removing deserved pollutants remaining from subsequent biological basis of after chemical oxidation treatment. So today, the most commonly adopted observant is the activated carbon. It is commonly used for the removal of various pollutants from waters as dyes and heavy metals. So there are several interests in the design strategy of new composite membranes. So I will show you some recent progress in composite membranes for water treatment. First is the microspires embedded the polymeric composite membranes. This group used assistance of iron oxide, microspires, for acid removing composite membranes. Researchers developed new composite membranes by modifying the pore support layer of a face inversion formed membrane for acid removals. Iron oxide microspires were immobilized in support layers of the membrane by reverse filtrations followed by a dopamine polymerization. So as a result, the composite membrane had excellent permeations, rejection, and absorption performances. So it also maintained the high absorption performance after regeneration. Another interesting study is about two-dimensional graphene-based thimphium nanocomposite membrane for nanofiltration applications. That this group combined graphene oxide, titanium oxide, in polyamide to form composite membrane for nanofiltration and antifouling applications. So they created a novel graphene oxide based thimphium nanocomposite membranes for nanofiltrations. They took advantage of the nano channels between graphene oxide, TiO2 nanoparticles were introduced between these graphene oxide nanites on a TiO2 geo-nanocomposite. So this nano-composite has stable nano-channels. So they also studied the effects of embedded nanoparticles on the physical-chemical properties of the prepared membranes. And the nanofiltration membrane performance. So as a result, the composite membranes showed the elevation of nanofiltration performance and antifouling property enhancement. So next, the metal organic framework is a class of hybrid inorganic/organic materials. They have recently attracted tremendous interest in the fabrication of a thimphium nanocomposite membranes with exceptional pump selectivity. So however, the structural performance relationship of these kinds of membranes is a function of both metal frame of type and membrane fabrication procedures. So it has not been elucidated in the structures. In this study, so using three types of hydro-stable moths, namely Mil, NH2UIO66, ZI-A, they fabricated thimphium nano-composite nanofiltration membranes via both blending and preloading interfacial polymerization methods. The result shows the incorporation of moths could enhance water permeability of TFM membranes. So they also found moths play in regulating membrane performance, promoting molecular design of a moth incorporated TFM membranes via precise control of moth interactions. So one of the major issues in nano material-based composite membrane is the nano material aggregation within polyamide layer in TFM membranes. These aggregations can negatively affect membrane filtration performance. So post-treatment on the surface of a TFM membrane is one of the strategies to solve this problem. So in this study, so they used eco-friendly surface modification techniques based on plasma enhanced chemical vapor deposition, ECVD. So using ECVD, they deposit hydrophilic acrylic acid onto the titanium tubes PA surface of TFM membranes. They aim at simultaneously minimizing the PA surface defects caused by nano-materials incorporation and improving the membrane surface hydrophilicity for reverse osmosis applications. So they showed the sodium chloride rejection of the past modified TFM membranes was improved with the search passes. So they also demonstrated the deposition of hydrophylling materials on TFM membrane surface via eco-friendly method provide the potential to develop a defect-free TFM membrane with enhanced fouling resistance for improved salination process. But now, I would like to briefly introduce recent studies on composite membranes for water treatment in our lab. As it is shown in the images, we use nanofilters, GO graphene oxide, as a functional system for daily moving composite membranes. So actually, our goal is to explore the modification of the interfacial dialysis cellulose surface through the molecular interactions of active graphene oxide to a composite hydrozoan network without using external crystal linkers. Just we use the simpler dry testing process and the low-cost absorption technique to make composite membranes. So we feel this is a promising approach toward the daily moving composite membranes. So the composite membranes showed cellulose robustly interacted via chemical bonds of the graphene oxide to a composite hydrozoan network by maintaining the three-dimensional force layer structures and functional surface of the membranes was enhanced towards the specific groups for excellent pollutant daily mover performance. And it also showed the good stack performance, stacking performance. So also, so we use graphene oxide as a nanofilter in extra composite membranes. So this served as a functional assistance for forward osmosis composite membranes. So extra membrane is abundant waste of materials. So extra membrane has a highly porous and fibrous structures. So it satisfies the requirement for forward osmosis membrane. So we created polyamide-based bio-composite forward osmosis membrane by using extra membrane as a membrane support. So this composite membrane showed osmatically driven water flots with low structural parameters. So in this work, we used the zeolite emitters ray framework as a nanofilter for composite membranes. So these T embedded cellulose acetate membranes for osmotic driven membrane process were fabricated using the face inversion method. We investigated the effects of different fractions of ZI in the cellulose acetate membrane, understand their influence on ODI and GERS, the osmotic driven membrane process performance. So result shows the hydro-stable cellulose acetate the TFM membrane is expected to be durable in water and hydrogenate fouling conditions. The zip composite membrane is expected to be durable in order and originate following conditions. So in summary, the composite membranes combines the advantages of absorption and membrane expression techniques. Composite membrane technology holds great potential for water treatment industry. So over the years, composite membranes stand out among efficient process. Used for removing various pollutants in waters. There have been remarkable progress in the composite membrane process. Still use of nano materials in polymer metrics was reported to enhance the mechanical and chemical properties. Nano materials based composite membranes provides a new approach to improve absorption and separation performance of composite membranes. So although they have drawbacks in membrane surface, there still remain lots of challenges associated with application. Stability durability of membranes and safety to humans and environments as well as scaling up issues for industrial applications. So future research should be focused on overcoming these concerns and challenges. To be able to utilize and commercialize composite membranes in water treatment technology. So that's all for my presentation today. So thank you very much for your time and attention.
Uh please understand he is not available for the discussion at this moment. So let's move to the next presentation. Uh Dr. Chen Jianzong is one of outstanding paper award winner. Actually, I would like mention that his paper published in last year is already cited ninety eight times by today. Thanks for your great contribution on nano community. Are you ready?
Yes, yes, let me get the slides.
Yeah, please start, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. And I'd like to say the this work came as a surprise. Of course, I'm grateful for nano convergence, the general to the committee to select this paper as a as a good paper, right? And and then also, of course, I like to thank um. My colleague, you know, Dr. Gu Liang and actually for inviting me to to write this this article. Uh so that's, you know, I need to thank him. Also, I want to thank my student, you know, Xiao, let me use a slideshow. All right. I also like to thank my students, Xiao, for really put many hours to put this paper together in terms of literature references. And also, finally, I would like to congratulate Nano Convergence for for this big milestone, you know, in terms of impact factor. All right. So with that, I'd like to start, you know, kind of given an overview of the kind of research. In my research group in the recently years. Uh in the area for heterogeneous cataractosis using nano materials, particularly for clean energy applications. And then let's start with this particular slide we show. And we all cares about air quality, right? Clean air. But pollution is always, you know, around us. And particularly in the last two years, we're also concerned about all other kinds of volatile. Transmittive diseases, right? So those kind of things, you know, um have something to do with the energy, right? Energy we use particularly for transportation. And we use fossil fuels and the fossil fuels produce pollutants, right? And one of the way current technology to deal with this emission control system such as karate converters. Of course, we really like to go is, you know, the, you know, carbon to hydrogen ratio, you know, change the ratio. And from ancient time, we use a lot of carbon. And one of the hopes is in the future, we use a lot of hydrogen and then then we don't have the carbon footprint in terms of air pollution. So what are the ways to handle this in terms of the hydrogen, the carbon ratio? One of the ways, there are many ways, right? One of the ways is really to look at the fuel cell or. In terms of water spreading produced hydrogen field, which is a clean source. And then so as illustrated this right hand side of this top panel. Is we using the solar energy to produce hydrogen field from water. And then then he used the hydrogen to generate electricity. And in the meantime, produce the only part is water. So it's a clean cycle, okay? The clean cycle is really represents one of the ways, one of the vectors towards the future, right? And there's many things already happening today. And then we made this whole thing more and more promising, right? So I like to, since cataractosis play a major role in this kind of sustainable energy vector. I'd like to start with a little bit of basis for cataractosis, right? I'm going to go through this even quickly, reactants to products. And one of the things, simul dynamically, this both semi dynamic and kinetic factor. Simul dynamically, for example, if you have an energetically favorable process from reactants products. But kinetically, you may have this huge barrier. This barrier is one of the things prevent many reaction to occur in very efficient way. So with calories as represented by this red curve, then you can really load down this barrier. And then you cannot change the simun dynamics, but you change the barrier, you change the pathways. And then you enable the reaction kinetically favorable, okay, or kinetically fast. Of course, you can also reverse the process, the same thing is true with simun dynamics. You cannot change the simun dynamics, but again, you also have this energetic barrier with with in terms of uncatalyzed and catalyzed reactions. Of course, the cataractosis involves both homogeneous cataractosis and heterogeneous cataractosis. Homogeneous cataractosis basically is reactants and catalysts in one phase. And more importantly, in my research, is we focus on heterogeneous cataractosis. We're dealing with a sorry liquid interface or sorry gas interface. And then one of the example system is electro cataractosis. That's very classic heterogeneous cataractosis system, okay? In this particular system, I want to start with this one example. Water splitting, right? Produce hydrogen. So this process is a simple reaction, water produce hydrogen and oxygen. And then you can also reverse the process, okay, by reacting hydrogen with oxygen to produce water. And then this is can be done in fuel cell. So basically, if you think about this duo cell, you can, on one hand, you can produce switched polarity, produce hydrogen field. On the other hand, you can convert the hydrogen to water, so in the meantime harvesting electricity. And this reaction, if you use the cataractosis diagram, this energetic diagram. One is uphill reaction for water spreading. The other one is downhill reaction for fuel cell. That's why we, you know, we have consume energy to produce hydrogen field. And thankfully, is from solar field, solar energy, we can produce, you know, uh electricity to electrolyze water to produce hydrogen. And then the fuel cell is a downhill reaction and also has a kinetic barrier, okay? So today I'm going to focus on this two particular reaction to hide some of the things. And my group is has been doing the last couple of years. So what is bleeding? One of the fundamental aspects is the two reactions, right? It's a hydrogen evolution reaction or E R and oxygen evolution reaction. And okay, the first one is a typo, should be H E R, okay? Right. So the the reaction is kinetically, you have to overcome a barrier, okay? This is a, as illustrated in the bottom panel, is over potential, okay, this over potential. And also you deal with the stability, the catalyst often suffers from poisoning and decay in terms of structure. So this is one of the things, poisoning is one of the major thing in uh heterogeneous cataractosis. All right. So hydrogen evolution reaction. The reaction is very simple, right? It moves whether you think acidic media or in alkaline media, it moves as well hydrogen. Uh one of the things, the recanal process shows many metals can function as catalysts. So one of the ways, depending on the absorption energy of the hydrogen, right? Cannot be too strong, cannot be too weak. That's, you know, typically is a platinum uranium other re at the top of this recanal part. In alkaline media, similar things occur is the. Uh hydrogen absorption is also one of the key elements. And the the old sizes we cannot pass, platinum is one of the most important catalysts. And of course, platinum is very efficient, platinum is also one of the worst catalysts, right? Because it's expensive and the global supply is limited. And for the uh, okay, so the oxygen evolution reaction, there's also. One of the simple waters speeding is oxygen evolution actually turns out to be one of the key, you know, uh part in terms of the overall potential. So in the H E R, hydrogen evolution is a little bit relatively easier than. You know, again, this is also a typo, should be O E R, okay, O E R. All right. So this particular reaction here is the. There's two kinds of mechanism, one is absorbed evolution mechanism moves the watch absorb species, okay? And again, this also to the canal process, you see oxide, uranium oxide are the one, some of the best catalysts.
Uh Dr. Zhou?
Yes.
Uh just a minute, uh we need solve some problem.
Oh, okay. What's the problem?
Yeah, please go ahead, sorry. Please go ahead. Yeah, you solved the problem. Yes.
So it was also my voice too low or? Was my voice? I'm okay?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So the next mechanism is the last oxygen mediated mechanism typically involves oxygen, less oxygen vacancies. And those particular mechanism also particularly for very common for oxide, metal oxide. So without getting into all the specific mag- magnetic aspects, I want to show you one example, you know, research. Is this particular example is using nano engineer catalyst by tuning the morphology of the catalyst, you know, using gold cobal. Cobal is very know, well known for for O E O E R reaction. But the efficiency is relatively low. But so we basically introduce gold. And by introduce gold form this kind of coarse type of structure, it's not a complete. Coarseo is actually more kind of a face segregated structure. This particular structure allows you to deliver bi functional synergy, okay? On one hand, the gold center allows effectively electronic transform. And on the other hand, the cobal oxide allows to uh to effective oxygen vacancy, right? Particularly high oxygen value state reactivity. And as shown here with gold forty, cobal sixty will have the highest activity depending on the reason composition. So this is one of the way to highlight, you know, the nano structuring plays a major role, okay? So this is only one example, okay, there's many other examples, okay? So I want to switch gear a little bit in the limited amount of time. You know, on the other part of my talk, which is the conversion of hydrogen field to electricity producer. Water is the only byproduct. So that's one of the widely studied system is a protein exchange membrane field cell, P M field cell. And reactions were as highlighted in the early slides is with a hydrogen. Oxidation and the annual oxygen reduction in the castle, right? This particular reaction turns out the one of the most important part is the oxygen reduction reaction is a sluggish reaction. This particular structure reaction limit the kinetic of this reaction. So reaction simun dynamic favorable but kinetically sluggish, okay? Of course, this is a particular stat I'll show another kind of feels as a uh is methanol fuel cell. Since we're time limit, I'm not going to get into that part. All right. So what are the challenges for P M field cell? One of the challenges catalyst, okay, to that which will contribute the cost of this fuel cell. Uh significant significant way, okay? Another challenge is durability, you know, the catalyst often cannot last long. Some other areas very well saw the challenges of them, okay? Those are the two major challenges for P M field cell. That's also what part of the reason the mass commercialization P M field cell is still. Uh at the early stage, okay, early stage. Unlike battery, right, at least mine batteries of, you know, is already widely commercialized. So the fuel cell is agree at early stage because of this two challenges, okay? So this challenge, as I mentioned, oxygen reduction reaction or is one of the main barrier, okay? This this kinetically sluggish. So what are the 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 key things we can study, right? So illustrating the right hand side is basically two plots, one is rotating dis走向 plot for the oxygen reduction reaction. Another one is a fuel cell, a performance plot in terms of I V curve. One of the scene, the kinetic region really deals with the mass activity and specific activity. So that's the region which allows us to understand if we spend some time to understand this particular area. We can actually manipulate this catalytic activity in terms of reducing the barrier for oxygen reduction reaction. So basically, I want to re point out is with the R D E and a field cell, this overlap region. If we can spend some time to look at the the kinetic region, understand this region, we can really understand the catalytic activity and durability. So what are the the catalysts of that, okay? This is with a very early stage, look at the oxygen reduction, just look at the metals, there's different models, okay? Basically, oxygen, you know, you can undergo separate two electron passes, right? Or you can in the middle as in the pouring model, okay? Or you can go through this kind of bridge model or a single side model. Ultimately move for four electron passes produce water. And this process and many things to this as a descriptor in terms of calories. Activation energies, deep end center, lattice strain, crystal faces, ligands size, particle size, shape and composition. So of course, I'm not going to go through all this, you know, factors, right? But one of the things we can always look at one thing in at time to understand. And to gain some fundamental understanding. So I'm going to show you two particular examples in the last two years or so, last two or three years or so. With the in terms of understanding this kind of uh descriptors, catalytic. Okay, so before doing that, you know, fuel cell, there's all all kinds of nano engineer catalysts. And we recently got a review published in the Advanced Materials Journal, really. In the overview of the all kinds of nano engineer catalysts, okay? So that's really the one of the very active fields in terms of the design catalysts to handle some of the bigger challenges such as. in terms of the design catalysts to handle some of the bigger challenges such as durability and of course, right? So without going, getting into all this details, I'm going to really want to highlight some of our approach. One of our approaches nano alloy. So basically, I'm natural thinking, right, is if we can alloy noble metals such as platinum, palladium, those kind of expensive metals with non noble metals such as cobalt, copper, vanadium, have a non noble metals. Those kind of metals will allow us to reduce the cost, this is in the first place, right, in the first place. And more importantly, this kind of arrow, it turns out actually enhance the activity in a significant way. Then the challenge is the stability, right, the durability, you know, comes into play. And also we spent quite some time to try to understand how we, you know, can on one hand enhance the activity, on the other hand, also, you know, develop some insights in terms of the durability. So one of the things we learned over the years is some the nano alloy structure, this is recently we have an article in this kind of chemical research. Read the inside would develop this, the so-called structural morph morphology, what is you know, cautious structure, where this alloy structure, where this certain element enriched core, enriched shell, it's all dynamic, okay, this process. This dynamic process is through particularly under reaction conditions, okay? Of course, and many of the studies, you know, including our own, you know, in the past, is using, you know, the catalyst before the cataractosis or after the cataractosis, okay, it's accidental study. And really to understand this kind of process, we need an initial study, okay? Now, those are very, those are very important. So in this kind of process, we actually, I'm the two example, I'm going to illustrate to you is involved in institutional operando study to try and understand this kind of process, whether we have alloy state or or fully D alloy state or cautious structural, et cetera, et cetera, okay? So the reaction, there was a mechanism, right, it was a mechanism. The mechanism in terms of oxygen reduction often involves to all species, okay? Sometimes all H species in the in the in terms of a surface adsorb species, which is not only the function as intermediate species, but sometimes also as a poisonous species. So the reason understanding is this, if we introduce alloy, we can have a different multi-functionality on the surface. Some metals take care of the activation, some other metals takes care of the intermediate species. So ultimately, you know, play a synergy, you know, role. Of course, in this process, many other things to occur, the electronic effect, lattice stream, the the deep end center, et cetera, all these things start coming into play, you know, make it complicated. That's why this particular field is lots of research going going on. Our own research also, you know, in the past few years, we also done quite some work in this area. And so in the next few slides, I'm going to highlight two of the papers, you know, you know, as photo faced here, in the last two or three years, right? You know, the reads trying to understand to those kind of in terms of the the catalyst itself, the structure, how those kind of things evolve. The first example is nano alloy cast with the platinum, palladium, this two noble metals. Then the alloys is two noble metals with assumed transition metals, you know, typically the three D transition metals. And this is nanoparticle, this is a nanoparticle format, okay, nanoparticle. So this particular catalyst we understand is the, we try to understand D L is always play a role for any nano alloys, okay, with the base metals undergo D alloy under acidic conditions. The one of the things I wonder we had, we also see since real, okay, in this process. So the catalyst preparation involves some chemical treatment, right? Basically, we synthesize the particles using wet chemistry. Then we actually oxygenate this process by removing the capping agent. Then we follow by reduction to re-calcide, the calcide, the nanoparticle, that's actually very important, turns out, okay? The lattice string actually play a more most important role. So if you look at this series, different combination of platinum, palladium, copper, okay, in this particular example. We studied many other transition metals, but this is one example I want to highlight. Is at a certain composition, you can achieve the lowest lattice string, okay? That's and then if you simply look at the the composition dependence should be certain kind of linear or monotonic train, but this one is not. So there's certain kind of composition, this will favor a string shrinking, right, lattice lattice shrinking, okay? So then we look at the catalytic activity, right, using rotating dislecture. And with different composition, one of the things standing out is this platinum twenty, palladium twenty, copper sixty-five, which has a sixty, has highest catalytic activity. And more importantly, this cat is a may is is unusually stable, okay? And after fifty thousand cycles, still maintain essentially the same catalytic activity, right, essentially, okay? So we will also test this thing in the field cell, in actual fields, a P M field cell. So top wise, the field cell performance and the bottom one is the the durability and then just look at the cell voltage at a constant current as function time. And this also pretty stable, so this catalyst turns out to be extremely stable, okay? Then we did some studies, trying to understand the the structure, right? Was the way we have a D alloy state, end up with the platinum, palladium, and the surface cautious structure. It turns out the composition pretty much uniformly across randomly, I would say randomly across nanoparticles. Okay, this, we don't see much segregation. Based on this kind of thing, we want the initial hypothesis was this alloy after D L, certain amount D L into remaining copper actually produce real alloy state. So this this is a real occurring in this process. So if that's the case, we need to understand, there must be a dynamic process during this some process, okay, during this field cell reaction process. So with that, we actually applied a single charm X-ray diffraction. But we use a single charm facility because nano scale materials and it don't really have the kind of Christianity as the bulk phase. So this particular way we uses a single charm X-ray diffraction. And one of the things, PDF is a pale distribution function analysis where I can analyze the single charm X R D data using a pale distribution function analysis produce the so-called lattice structure. And here is a a set of results. Really, we look at the, this is the X R D pattern, water flow flow pattern. Then we do all kinds of three D modeling and it turns out is the alloy structures the best fit to the PDF structure. And then if you look at the lattice, you know, in this lower panel is the indeed, indeed, there's some D L, you know, copper in the early stage, the first two thousand cycles. And this kind of process actually is very slow and it's not completely D alloyed. And the lattice lattice parameters way much lower than platinum, palladium. And this process even after twelve twenty thousand cycles still didn't reach the platinum, palladium state. So the Mr. It's not say forever, you know, it's not D alloy, but it's in terms of the number of cycles they can stay. This is one of the best example, okay? In those fifty thousand, we we I have the next example is we go to one hundred thousand cycles, it was where stable, but D L occurs. The question is, what is the remaining materials, right? So we did some D F D calculation, it turns out the alloy state, the D L in terms of much more difficult in terms of the energy. We also tried to do some D F D calculation, the energy barrier. Also turns out the alloy state has lowest energy barrier, okay? In comparison with this, with the pure platinum, palladium. So this is one of the ways to, of course, this model, model, this certain kind of something, but need to provide some kind of guidelines. So here's one illustration to summarize the kind of since we discovered is basically during the D L, the green metal is a couple. So whether it's in the R D experiment or membrane electrical assembly in the field cell, D L occurs, we are in is a company in this process. So that's with a a major finding from this particular study. In the next few minutes, okay, how many minutes I have? So, okay?
Yeah, you have time, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have time, right, okay? So I would I would I would say five to eight minutes or so, okay, I can finish up. So this particular work is using a narrow wire. Because one of the question in the narrow part is this, we're trying to understand the lattice string. The problem is there's a particle centering, okay? That could be play a role in that string. So one of the things to do is a narrow wire, narrow wire has one of the durability is the connection to wire morphology allows you to prevent centering more effectively. So we can understand the things without confounding factors, other in other effect, okay, into play. So this one, we're using a narrow wire, twisty narrow wire to understand the activity durability. One was a particular example is platinum ion. So we pick up this iron as one of the non transition metals, non noble metals. Because iron has the greatest tendency to D alloy. This is, this is the most favorite D alloy, okay, we pick up this one, okay? We want something which is easy to D alloy, okay, one of something. So in this case, the this is a, we can make different compositions, you know, this, you know, with three different platinum composition, we can see the Y morphology changes, okay? Then we look at the mapping data, we can see the bi-metall, bi-material composition is across the entire narrow wire. So it's no face segregation in the first place, as as a synthesis. Then we also look at the high energy X R D PDF analysis, we can see the lattice, you know, of course, I'm not getting the great detail of the pale distribution function analysis, but I want to highlight those lattice parameters as illustrated in this plot, okay? You can see for the different composition, so have subtly different lattice constant. Actually, it's consistent with the alloying with platinum with iron. So we did some modeling, okay, this modeling say shows, okay, without, again, without getting the great detail, I just want to point out is the metals, the base metals, depending on the composition, there are certain kind of local phase segregation, but largely is randomly distributed across the entire narrow wire, particularly on this particular interest in the surface, okay? The surface layer, you know, is also, you know, mixed with some bi- binary system, okay? So you guys, those kind of distribution really illustrates the the binary distributions relatively random uniform across the entire narrow wire, okay? Now, look at the electric chemistry, okay? So what I show here is a different composition, okay, A B C D, different composition. And one of the composition turns out to be the the reason the highest activity, which is about is not the highest platinum composition, it's actually the high, the lowest, relatively low, not the lowest one. About twenty percent of platinum, which gives the highest catalytic activity. Then we look at the the durability, the durability is by by rotating dislecture. This is after one hundred twenty thousand cycles. Indeed, there's some decay, okay, in the fourth fifty thousand cycles, the minimum amount decay. But after one hundred twenty thousand cycles, it's about twenty percent decay, okay? So that's very stable, okay, that's, you know, that's by 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 any standards, you know, this is very stable, okay? With iron, okay, with iron as a as a as a material. Then we particularly look at the composition change. Indeed, there's a D alloy, okay? Whether you started with twenty percent, twenty-four percent of a platinum or seventy-one percent of platinum. So always approaching the about this seventy percent of a platinum. Yeah, in the end, okay, but quickly. But after reaching this kind of composition, it turns out the activity, this is three different composition, whether it's six cycles, forty thousand cycles. The activity can can be maintained, particularly with the low platinum composition, okay? And the lattice string actually also show once you reach a certain kind of composition stability, the lattice string also maintain a constant lattice string. So all this indication says the, and this lattice strings never reached a pure platinum, pure palladium. So there's something occurring, real, okay? Then we did some initial study, okay, initial high energy X R D study. Again, I'm not going to get into the great detail of this, all this pale distribution function analysis. But I do want to point out a couple things over there, okay, in this plot. It's less constant, it turns out very quickly reach this particular constant, then stays there for a long period of time, you know, up to sixteen, you know, after one thousand six hundred cycles, of course, in the in this X R D, we didn't do twenty thou- twenty thousand cycles, we did about, you know, almost two thousand cycles, okay? Really indicates is read the real must occur, okay, must occur. So if you look at the lattice constant, the compare is indeed the lattice constant with different composition. Once the reached certain number of cycles, you know, thousand seconds, the lattice constant largely maintain as a certain kind of alloy state. And this particular thing is very important, so lattice string plays an important role in the first place to enhance the activity. This, secondly, is lattice string still being maintained during this process, okay? So the, I'd like to really wrap up this particular study with this conclusion, right? Is initially, there's a leaching of this base metal, iron. Then once you reach a certain degree of D L instead, the base metal will undergo real. The real occurs in such a way allows you to remember, you know, the the process can be something like surface rich alloy or core, certain kind of composition which core, but this process was currently still under investigation, okay? But we're very confident this process is 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 occurring. But what is the degree of this process is still part of our investigations. So with that, I'd like to summarize, you know, so one of the things, alloying, real, in particularly in field cell applications under the under severe D alloying condition. You know, you can actually enable just high activity and particularly high durability. That's the case for nanoparticles, that's the case for nano wires. And our current work is really trying to understand the the relationship between morphology, lattice string and durability, right? By studying a wide range of nano alloy catalysts, particularly under reaction condition. So not just through the accidental characterization, but more importantly is in situ operando calculations. But that, I like, of course, the the works, you know, is done by many students and postdocs. And particularly last way with a single charm X-ray characterization, we work with many scientists. So collaborators and without the collaboration, of course, is it's impossible to carry out this our bundle studies. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your attention and we'll be happy to answer any question you might have. Thank you.
Thanks for the nice talk.
Thanks for the nice talk, we'll take question from the audience on site first, any question? Yes, Professor Zhang.
Thank you for a nice presentation, I have some simple question about the nanoparticle study for catalyst. So when you perform the, using such a nano catalyst, is during the catalyst reaction, does the nanoparticle is dissolved in the solution during the electrochemical process? And the other question is, how do you bind those particle onto the platform or, or your substrate?
That's a good question, thank you for the question, the first question was this dissolution. Yes, there are people studying dissolution, okay. So after, for example, DRO, right, so we did see some of the base matter such as iron couple. The DRO in, in a rotating disc election study, the DRO into the box solution, there's no return. In the fuel cell, we actually observe this re-deposition, but again, the re-deposition is a minimum, okay, is a minimum. And there's also people studying even platinum, there's a certain degree of a de- of a dissolution, okay. So the dissolution is, isn't it, isn't it a definite issue, definite issue. But under certain kind of control condition, we actually study the, the, the solution, we take the solution. We do ICP study, ICP study to detect what is in the solution, actually, we didn't detect. We detect some, detect some base metal, this base metal is actually kind of consistent with the, the composition nanoparticles, okay, so it's basically they are metal dissolution. The second question is ready to can you repeat the second question?
Binder or?
Oh, yeah, binder, yes, 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 yeah, the binder is, we use a Nafim solution, Nafim, it's a polymer, okay. This is the same thing as the fuel cell membrane over there, to fix catalyst on the surface of the, of the electrode, whether it's carbon, glass carbon electrode or porous carbon close in the fuel cell, so basically is Nafim, Nafim is a polymer. It's hydrophilic, hydrophobic combination, and for physical polymer, which allows you to fix the, the catalyst nanoparticle, nano wires onto the surface.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, any question from the online audience? If not, we'll finish this session, thanks again, Dr. Zhang.
Thank you.
So hello, I am Yongjun Chang, the administrative editor of NanoConvergence. I appreciate for being a chair of today's session. The first speaker of this second session is Professor Reno Choi. He is the professor of INA University. He will present his research three-dimensional integration, the latest last technology of the Moore, Moore's era. Please give him a warm applause.
Thank you for having me here. When I heard that I was chosen to be your audio distinguished lecturer, it really helped, makes me happy. And on the other hand, it was really stressful that I should prove myself in this stage that I was deserve to be, receive this award. So actually, I think about what should I talk and I know that the audience are from the various backgrounds, so I decided that to give a talk on the general topics on the semiconductor and why I finally interested in these topics. So the topic was entitled as three-dimensional integration, the last technology of the most era. So I first I talked about the history of semiconductor and I move on to the 3D integration. And I talk about the new, new technology term, the heterogeneous integration and hybrid bonding. And finally, I summarized my talk. Do you know who this guy is? So this guy actually regarded as one of the best genius in human history. And among the many of his achievement, he proposed this architecture to build modern computers. So central process unit to the control and then arithmetic calculations. And then the data will be stored in the memory and also the software will be stored. So this architecture is called von Neumann architecture, and he is John von Neumann. He died in nineteen fifty-seven, in his age of fifty-four. This actually decided all the semiconductor industries, this controlled processing unit, CPU unit. The companies who made these companies, who made this unit are logic companies and system semiconductor devices. And Intel, AMD, and those kind of companies doing that. And this memory unit is made by, made memory companies like Samsung, SK Hynix, and Micron. And this person, at his age of twenty-one, he devised the digital circuit design theory. So he expressed that all, he, if he has switches, as many as switches, then he can solve the Boolean algebra. That means all the logics can be solved by switches, if we have a good switches. And he also demonstrated full adder circuit with switches, full adder circuit is doing the, the the multiply, the add up of those values with switches. So what this means is all calculations and all algebraic logic can be done with switches. So we have switches, but it's not a semiconductor switches at first time. First switch was used for this logic device is vacuum tubes. So vacuum tubes looks like this, and it consists of filament as a cathode. And if we heat up this filament with biasing the filament, then it emit electrons. And then electrons goes to the node here, and the current flows here. But if we put the metal grid here and then we apply the negative bias here, the electron cannot go here. So it can cut the current here, so it can be a switch. So using this vacuum tubes, we do a lot of things like, it can be a switch, also it can generate electricity. It can amplify, amplify the signal, it can rectify the current, current, and it can control and transform light into current and transform current into light. Everything we do with semiconductors, at this time, we, we did with vacuum tubes. But it is, it very, it was very fragile, it easily broke, and when it is heated up, it consumed a lot of power, so people wants to have better switch and more robust and more, less powers consumed, consumed. This is computers that used, made by vacuum tubes, it is any first general purpose computers. It was built on nineteen forty-nine, forty-five, and it consists of eighteen thousand vacuum tubes and seven-two-hundred diodes and fifteen-hundred relays. And the handle sold it joint, it has five millions, so it's really big and as I told you, the vacuum tubes easily broken, so to replace that vacuum tubes, there is a corridor to the, the technician should walk around. And it has also memories, it's not a semiconductor memory, the mercury delay line memory. It is like a tube, tubes of mercury inside. And then we put the, the echoes, then the echo, the is go forward and backward and then store the data. And magnetic core memory also exists. So finally, we have the semiconductor device at nineteen forty-seven, John Baden, William Shookley and Walter Britain. This is the most famous, one of the most famous pictures in the science. And then this guy, William Shookley, is called later, is called the man who brought silicon in the Silicon Valley. And then this guy, John Baden, received two Nobel Awards in the physics. This is only one who received the two Nobel Awards in the physics. Madame Curie got the physics Nobel Prize in physics and chemistry, so he's only one here. But this is a discrete, the, the device. So it, it is, looks like this, and then nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen fifty-nine, there was a big there was a big revolution in the semiconductor industry. As Jack Gilby at Texas Instruments, he built a germanium integrated circuit, IC. IC is the, the devices, we put the devices in the planar planes here, and then we interconnect these things with gold gold wires or metal wires. And then at the similar times, Robert Nois at Fairchild made silicon integrated circuit. Actually, these are very big things, even they didn't know the what, the what will happen with this invention. The integrated circuit is built like this, we built, if we, the, take analogy on the building building of the houses or apartment, discrete circuit make the device one by one. But the integrated circuit build it at the same times. So if we make a small dice, then we can make more and more monies. If we made a ten, a hundred, twenty device, twenty dice in one vapor, then if we can get twenty dollars, then if we made two hundred dice, then we have, we have the two hundred dollars. So how we can do, do it? It's just a scaling down, if we scaling down the devices, then we can have a small dice, and then we can make money. So now, this IC opens the scaling era. So now we make a smaller devices, then we can make money. That trend is observed by, was observed by Gordon Moore, and he made the Moore's law in nineteen sixty-five. He saw, he observed the trend of the transistor, number of transistors per dice. And then he predicted that this trend, trend will go, will go on. And then that is because of to reduce the cost. People can, a company wants to reduce the cost to make money, this trend will go and go. And that is right, the Moore's law is keep going and going, and then it is now, still valid at now, at this point also. And how many transistors we have, you know, one die, we have fifty billion transistors in one centimeter, one centimeter dyes. This really big numbers, and you have to remember these numbers, because I'll go back to this number again later. And also scaling, not only bring the, the increase of the integration density. It also give us the good device, a good switches. So switches looks like this, when we turn on the switches, then the water should reach here at very fast. It, but we have a plastic capacitor here, so it should flow into the plastic capacitor and then fill it plastic capacitor first and then reach here. So to make a good switches, we have to reduce the capacity of this plastic capacitors, and then we have to increase the current flow here. To increase the current flow, best way is to reduce the gate length here. So if we reduce the gate length, then we can have a higher integration density, and then we can also have a faster switches. So both are happy, customer can happy, and then also the makers, the company can happy. So it goes sixty years from nineteen fifty-seven. But as you expect, it is, it faced the physical limit. So non-classical scaling technique has been also adopted for the last twenty years. So strain, strain engineering is first one, and then high K meta gate is next one, and then fin pad is the, also next one. And then the last June six studies, several days ago, Samsung announced that Gate All Round will take over the fin pad position, and they made a three nanometer technology with the gate all around the FET. So sixty years scaling down, maintaining the Moore's law face the physical limit, as well as a high process and infra cost. Then what will be the next? First, we will still go on the, the scaling, so to go on the scaling, we have to reduce the footprint of the devices, so next one is the vertical transport nano sheet field effect transistor. So we reduce the, the footprint to, by the making of vertical devices. So instead of putting the device next by next, we will make a vertical devices. And also, we need a new drivers for the semiconductor development, because we are reaching the scaling limit. And then also power have issues, seventy-two, eight percent of total power is attributed on the on chip connectivity, it means the interconnection using a lot of powers now. And then recently, wide variety electronic systems have been launched, and that required integrate various functions like logic and memory and RF and sensors and everything. So to do the all these things, people think that we need three-D integration, definitely. Stack up the older devices layers like this, so three-D integration would increase integration density and also decrease the power consumption by reducing the, the interconnection lengths. And already, first three-D integration is in the market, it is used TSV through silicon VR and bump. So we made the chips like that, and then we drilled the hole in the substrate and then fill it in the metals, and then using the low temperature melt bump, we bonded these two dyes together. But to do this, it is, then we can, in the same footprint, we can have two times of the integration densities. It has advantages, it can use the same fab processes to fabricate each dice. And then to build these dyes, no thermal budget issue. But it has also disadvantages, like these are opaque, these two dyes are opaque, so it is very hard to do the high frequent, high accuracy aligns. So it's opaque, so the bump should be bigger, should be, should be big to align each other and then bond each other. So another way is proposed, and that is my research interest from five years ago. So monolithic three-D integration is like this, we built the device layers like this. And then we put the very thin device active layers on top. And then on, on top of these active layers, we built device layer again, so it is kind of sequential integration. And then how to, how to interconnect each other is using the lithography. So, so these VRs are very small compared to the, the through silicon beers, so it has advantages. It can have extremely scaled via and high via densities, and it is compatible with current CMOS processor. But it has also disadvantages, disadvantage is everything else of disadvantages. It should need a process integration complexity, and then need to develop a special technology to make this active layers on top of device layers. And moreover, the worst part is a tough thermal budget. To build this four-layered device layers, we cannot use the high temperatures, because if we use the high temperatures, that melt all the metal parts, metal interconnected in the bottom layers. So M3D, monolithic three-D integration requires very, many new process, new process technology, like make a lower device layers more thermally robust. So contact side and then gate stack, and then contact metal should be very highly thermal budget, should tolerate high summer budget. Also, we have another technology to put the upper layer, upper, the active layer. So somebody uses smart code and vapor bonding process, and somebody uses epitexial growth from the silicon from the bottom, and then amorphous silicon deposition and polycrystallization with a laser. And then also we can put the alternative channel material like And then also we can put the alternative channel material like a two D materials. And then also, we should build a device here with a low temperature process. We need a high temperature to build a good device, but we have, we cannot use the high temperature here. So what we use is the laser processor. Using the lasers, we should build the suicide or source drain activation and gate stack. All the summer process is using the lasers. And heterogeneous integration is introduced recently. And then it is quite popular right now. And heterogeneous integration is the integration of separately manufactured component into a higher level assembly. It is also called system in packaging. So all dice from the different technology node can be connected each other in on one system packages. So to make a system packages. If it is possible, then we can do the chiplet chiplet design. What is chiplet design? Chiplet design is make her different functions from the different processes. So we make a different processes and then put it together using the heterogeneous integration into the one system packaging. So why it is good? If the yield increases as chip size decreases. If we have the same defects on these vapors, if the dice is small, then we can have better yield. If we have four dice here, then you can have just twenty five percent of good die. And then if we we have one die here, then one die is gone. So we have young zero percent yield. But if we have sixteen, then we can have eight dice, so fifty percent of the good dice. So dice is small, then yield will be good. So if we can use this heterogeneous integration and chipnet design, we can have better yield. So we can reduce the cost. And also, if we don't need to use the 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 sharp etch technology in in the same chips. So we can divide by the the more cost effective ways, forty nanometer, twenty five nanometer, fourteen nanometer like this. So we can use a more cheaper etch technologies, so we can also reduce the cost. So chipnet design and heterogeneous integration enable significant cost reductions. So but it is ideally really good, but it needs one things. It should have a high density of interconnect each other to connect the all other chipness and then all other dyes. So but the problem is bump size now too big. We have a very big size of bump. So we can only have in in the the unit millimeters, we can have only one hundred twenty interconnects. So we reduced the bike bump size to the micro bump, so we can have eight hundreds. But if we don't use the bump and then we just connect these two dice using just a copper pad. Then we can increase these numbers significantly like twelve, twelve thousand or one million, two hundred thousands. So bumpless is the way we have to go. And then if we reduce the bump size, then we can also reduce the bump funding pitches significantly. So the technology that is proposed from several the companies is called hybrid bindings. Hybrid bonding is like this. We make the copper pad using the copper processes. And then we finalize the dice here and then two dice each other is activated the oxide and then align. And then put it together, then directly can be born because the dielectrics are activated by plasma. And after that, we put the high temperature on it, then copper is swollen and then connect each other. So this is a hybrid bonding. So using this hybrid bonding, Intel and TSMC already proposed the advanced packaging technologies. And then their limit is ten micrometer pitch and then TSMC is fifteen micrometers pitch. So the how small we should go is what I think is that if we should to see that this Intel's backend process. If we see that Intel's ten nanometer backend process, M one pitch is thirty six nanometer. And the M seven pitch is one seventy three nanometer and M ten pitch eight hundred sixty four nanometer. If we go down to the five hundred nanometer pitches using these technologies, then we don't need to put in stay into the vapors. We can make devices on the small chips and then put it together and then make a device, make a chips with using that one. So the problem is then how we can go to the fifty nanometer pitching bindings. So big problem is how can we align these two things, fifteen nanometer pitch pad? Because we cannot see this one. So we should have the way to align each other to to achieve this fifteen nanometer pitch bindings. That is one thing I'm interested in now. And then finally, I'm reaching the two D materials. Two D material is really interesting because it in in the three D devices. Because it should need the transfer, transfer techniques. And then it needs to take transport to another materials. So if we're using the the logic devices or memory devices, on top of that, we put the two D materials. It is perfect materials to do the to make a three D devices. So several universities already do made this M three D with using two D materials. Just Stanford, Cleveland is one of the leading guy to that. Using the C N, the carbon nano tube F E T, they made, he made the logic and sensors and he put the R L M also. And then he made a carbon nano tube F E T logics. And he put together and they make a three D, monolithic three D devices. But there is also the predictions that how two D materials can be get into the real electronic electronics. So two thousand twenty, we are expecting the sensors and the backend of line for the optoelectronics. And then two thousand twenty, what transistor can be also used in the from the two D materials. But for to to do this one, there is all challenges we should overcome. We should overcome growth and transport aspects, growth of single crystal monolayer in larger area like a three hundred millimeter. And control the orientation of each grain during the decoration is important. And then the temperature should be less than five hundred degree. And then nearly wrinkled pre and residual pre benign transport processes needed. And then development of bottom approach to enable the area selective growth of two D material CMOS is also important. And device aspects, to make a device, it needs to construct resistance should be reduced. And the doping process to make our N N P and then interface for the F E T is also taken care of. And then I summarize my talk, three D integration becomes a key technology to increase the integration density to decrease the power consumption. And various three D integration techniques have been proposed. Among them, hybrid bonding is a promising technology, needs for the heterogeneous integration becomes larger. Still, still many technologies should be developed to realize a three D integration with a high interconnected density. And then two D materials have potential to be incorporated in three D integrations. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Che. If there are anyone who has question, please raise your hand and you can use the mic. Maybe I have one simple question about the monolithic, no, no, the the bumping bumpless connection. So you mentioned this bumpless connection is designed to connect two kind of chip.
Copper pad.
Yeah. But does it intend to stack more than two pair?
Actually, it's on now for the just two dice. But if we use the local silicon interconnect like the interproject things, then we can stack up those things also.
Okay. This is very challenging, but.
Yeah, that's a good question, actually. Yeah, people is thinking about that. And then the the TSMC is proposed, the local silicon interconnect. And then the Intel proposed the M E embedded the bridge. Those things also thinking, yeah.
And and another alternative way, the monolithic approaches are, I think, somewhat pursued by many research efforts. So I think one of one of the technology might lead in the future.
By the way, you have to remember that all technologies the developed should should integrate the five, fifty billion transistor in one, one centimeter and one centimeter areas. Those things should be done, otherwise we cannot use that in the silicon electronics.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If if there is no more question, then we can proceed to the next speaker. Thanks, thanks, Professor Che again.
Thank you.
As the next speaker, Professor Ju Bin Jieko will present his professor of Purdue University. And he will present, he will present online about Pico EE, the journey to Pico scale electrodynamic engineering by online.
Excellent, excellent. So thank you, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank everybody who has come to the talk. I would have loved to be there in person, but as you know, these are slightly difficult times for travel. So I could not make it in person, but thank you for having me online. I want to start by acknowledging the committee and I'm going to express my sincere gratitude for this very special lecturership. And I am very happy because my association with the Nano Convergence Journal started many years back when I was actually an assistant professor at University of Alberta in Canada. And I was very happy to see that the paper has been very widely appreciated by the research community. The one that we published in Nano Convergence many years back. I also want to thank the Korean Nanotechnology Research Society for this special honor. And of course, all the editorial board and the committee members for this award. I should also mention some of my close collaborators in Korea, Professor Junseok Ro and many others with whom we have spoken about many related ideas over maybe the last five years or more. So it's really nice to continue that friendship and close collaborations with many researchers in Korea. So today's talk, I want to discuss a little bit of the futuristic things that we are working on. This is going to be a more fundamental science talk because we're trying to converge ideas from different fields. But we think that the biggest opportunity is really a little bit smaller than even the nano scale. And that's what we have is really the title of my talk. It's about the Pico scale and more specifically, Pico scale light matter interactions. So you heard a very nice talk just before mine about silicon electronics being integrated in extremely advanced ways. Here, we are looking at more of the material science that comprises devices. So it's a talk that is going to talk more about the fundamental signs of materials. But now we want to look at it at the atomistic level about how light and matter interact. So that's what we call it as Pico electrodynamics. You can see more of the the details on this research website. And you can also look at my Twitter page for some of the latest research. So I'd like to give you kind of the one side, one slide. Just give me one second and hide the video panel. All right, so I hope you can see this. So I want to give you the one slide overview of what is it that we've been working on? And what's the physics behind this Pico electrodynamics? So we're trying to bring a lot of different theorists together to tackle a fundamental problem where we are looking at light and matter interacting, but not in a kind of macroscopic sense. We are trying to look at really how does light scatter from the atoms? And when you look at it in that way, you actually require a theory framework that can handle beyond the conventional concepts of refractive index, conventional concepts of dielectric constants. And that's what we say is this atomistic susceptibility tensor. And I today, I'll just give you two examples of phenomena that can only be understood when you look at the Pico electrodynamics regime. And I want to emphasize that this approach, as we are developing it, is applicable to actually thousands of materials. So as we work with experimentalists, as we develop our theory, test it with rigorous results and match it with experiments, we think that we'll be able to really start making a lot of predictive make a lot of predictions about multiple different materials, not just the ones that I'm going to discuss today. So that's just the overview of this talk. And what I'd like to do is quickly mention that all the research, the research that I'm presenting today, the credit goes to my team. We have a research scientist, Dr. Fanglin Bao, a multiple postdoctoral scholars working on both theory and experiment. And these are my PhD students. We also definitely have openings. So if some of this research is interesting to you, please look us up and also contact me for further details. Now, for today's talk, I want to keep it a little focused. And I also want to try to give you an overview of the research as opposed to kind of giving you too many details. But this is going to be work that is performed by Dr. Toddman Machelen, Dr. Satvik Bhadwaj and my PhD student Wenbo Sun. And this was funded by the DARPA Nice and Light Matter Interactions Program over quite some period of time that allowed us to focus on some difficult problems. Now, because the talk is a theory talk, I want to explain that there are only two key ideas that I want you to take away. I will consider myself successful if these two concepts are well received by most of the audience, irrespective of whether you're theorists or experimenters. So what are those two key ideas? The first one is the concept of writing a Maxwell Hamiltonian for matter. Any two D material or three D material that you look into, we want to understand what is the concept of the Maxwell Hamiltonian. The second thing is the kind of picoscopic response of matter, which is encompassed in this idea called the atomistic susceptibility tensor. So these are the two ingredients of the theory framework that can be applied to many different materials. So that's what we are going to discuss and I'll give you two examples where this theory makes experimentally testable predictions. First one is actually a two D material. Very specifically, it's graphene with electron electron interactions in a magnetic field. The theory predicts the existence of a new topological invariant, a new quantum number that predicts the topological phase of this interacting electron fluid. And the second one is not topological, it's actually just silicon, a three D material. And when you start looking at the crystal structure and look at the atomistic susceptibility tensor, then you can see that the light matter interaction allows for anomalous atomistic waves. And that's the other prediction that I will very briefly talk about in today's lecture. So where does all this come from and what is kind of the starting point of this work? Now, we are trying to reconcile two opposing views of matter. One is the macroscopic view that we are familiar with. And we work with it all the time when we are dealing with refractive index, dielectric constants, looking at experiments. We are really looking at a macroscopic response of matter to light waves. So that's what we mean by electrodynamics. Across the frequency spectrum, you can always characterize the material by some macroscopic response. But microscopically, we know that it, all matter consists of some lattice or some say disordered medium. And we will try to stick to the more crystalline materials and crystalline solids for today's discussion, in which case you have a periodic lattice that you have to deal. So back in the late eighteen hundreds, this problem was already looked at. And that's what we know today as this Clausius-Mussotti theory or Lorenz-Lorenz theory. So what these papers showed was that you can connect a macroscopic dielectric constant to a microscopic polarization. They assumed a model of a solid that consists of small dipoles on a cubic lattice and showed you can actually connect the microscopic polarization abilities of these small dipoles. of these small dipoles to the macroscopic response that we know as the dielectric constant and the refractive index. Please note that this was before the birth of quantum mechanics. So this theory is completely classical. And it is still in use because of how well it captures a large class of effects. Now, once quantum mechanics was developed in nineteen sixty-two, there was actually a very influential and landmark paper from Adler-Weiser who showed that these macroscopic dielectric constants can be connected to correlation functions such as the charge-charge correlation function and the current-current correlation functions inside matter. So they were able to really connect the density matrix of the polarizable atoms to the dielectric constant, which is what is macroscopically measured. However, even today, when we deal with such Clausius-Mussotti relations or Adler-Weiser theory in the quantum sense, there is an inherent averaging of the microscopic fields which is done that leads to crucial loss of information when we are studying the electrodynamic properties of solids. And that's precisely what we want to address using the framework of this Pico electrodynamics. So what we really think, and because this is really a symposium for the entire Journal of Nano Convergence, we anticipate that there will be many interesting results from the research community in the twenty twenties, which have to do with going beyond the Clausius-Mussotti relation and beyond the Adler-Weiser theory and looking at the lattice and how light interacts with in the picoscopic regime. And I want to present what we think is the correct theory framework to approach this problem, which consists of the Maxwell Hamiltonian and an understanding of the atomistic susceptibility tensor. Can read about some of the work over here. And the problems and the questions that we can actually answer using such a theory is can there be new topological inversions inside matter that is coming from the Pico electromagnetic scattering of light with the atoms? And this could even be in the complete ground state, which is just due to the vacuum and thermal fluctuation. So it's really characterizing a ground state electrodynamic property of matter. And you can have topological inversions. I'll come to this in a little bit, beyond the Chern number and Z two inversions. And also a new types of anomalous atomistic waves, which are only present in a lattice theory, but not present when you perform these averaging. So those are the type of interesting questions that we think we can answer using this Pico electrodynamics framework. So let's go back and understand how to write down the Maxwell Hamiltonian for matter. Now, this concept of the Dirac Hamiltonian is very well known to us. If you work in 2D materials, you work in topological insulators. We always intuitively think of the Dirac Hamiltonian for the electrons in the solid. Now, it turns out in the nineteen eighties, for the case of vacuum, not for the case of solids, in free space, many researchers, Michael Berry, Marlon Scully, Duncan Halliday, they've studied what is known as the Dirac and Maxwell symmetries to show that the Maxwell equations can be written in a Hamiltonian form that allows you to directly compare with the Dirac theory and the Maxwell theory. So here you see the Dirac Hamiltonian that talks about the wave vector and the polymatrices. This is the Maxwell Hamiltonian that talks about the wave vector and the spin one matrices that govern light. Now, these symmetries are were very well known in the eighties. And one subtle point is that you can actually start writing these time reversal symmetry operators that tell you that the Dirac Hamiltonian is fermionic in nature and Maxwell Hamiltonian is bosonic in nature. One of the big successes of this theory in the eighties was that for vacuum, a very beautiful parallel exists between the monopole charge in vacuum and the monopole charge, vacuum in the Dirac Hamiltonian with a massless fermions, which have linearly dispersing states and the electromagnetic waves in vacuum, which are massless and they also have linear dispersion. You can show that there's actually in momentum space, a monopole charge in both the theories. And the fermionic one has a half integer charge and the bosonic one has an integer charge. So this was one of the successes of how nicely the parallel works out because we know that half integer spins correspond to fermionic degrees of freedom and integer spins correspond to bosonic nature of the particle. So this is something that was a success. But I should add that this theory, which combines Maxwell Hamiltonians and Dirac Hamiltonians, were successful in vacuum in the eighties, but they were never applied to materials physics. And that's essentially the contribution of my group that over many years, and these are all the papers that you can see, that the theory tools have been in development to apply these concepts to materials physics. And we believe that there is a lot of interesting phenomena that can be discovered through this approach. So I'll just try to summarize some of the results in the talk today. And before I do that and just give you a quick overview, I'd like to ask the chairman, how many minutes do I have to kind of convey just the broad results in this area?
You have, you have fifteen minutes, less than fifteen?
Oh, perfect, perfect. I think that's more than sufficient for me to finish the discussion. So one of the key ideas that we showed when you look at the Maxwell Hamiltonian is the concept of an effective and very specifically what is known as a gauge invariant photon mass. So in the Dirac Hamiltonian, we are very familiar with the concept of a mass term for the electron. You start with massless fermions and in a 2D system and you add mass, then you actually open up a band gap. So this is the energy momentum space and you have a band gap. What you can show is that if you have the Maxwell Hamiltonian and you start asking because of the symmetry, what is the exact term that enters like a mass term in the photonic case? Then by looking at the dispersion relation, looking at the electromagnetic waves, you can show that the Hall conductivity, which is a off diagonal response of matter, that Hall conductivity enters as an effective photon mass, creating a band gap for low energy electromagnetic waves, very similar to how mass creates a band gap for electron waves. And so this is essentially the master and this was one of the first contributions we made in this paper. And then we start asking, what if this mass, which is an effective photon mass, it has some dispersion? Now, if you have a dispersion in this photon mass, that means the mass changes with momentum, it connects to a fundamental quantity known as Hall viscosity, which is the hydrodynamic response of electrons inside a two dimensional material. Now, if you look at 2D materials, the specific case of graphene, you can actually have very large electron-electron interactions that cause the electrons to behave like it's a hydrodynamic fluid. So think of viscosity as the property of friction in a fluid. So honey flows with slowly as compared to water. So honey is more viscous. And that's your conventional idea of sheer viscosity is a dissipative form of viscosity. If you try to rotate this fluid, there's going to be an opposing force trying to slow down your rotational motion. Whereas Hall viscosity, which occurs in a 2D material in the presence of a magnetic field, when the electron-electron interactions dominate over electron impurity scattering and electron-phonon scattering, in that case, you can actually see that this rotational motion causes a response in the fluid, which is orthogonal or normal to the rotation. And this is a conservative and non-dissipative response. And this is where Hall viscosity comes from. So the photon mass dispersion in the Maxwell Hamiltonian actually connects to this concept of Hall viscosity. And Hall viscosity was, even though theoretically proposed in the nineteen nineties, was actually only measured in twenty twenty for the first time in Andre Gaim's group. So I'm going to skip some of the very technical aspects for some of the experts in the audience. Just want to mention that the photon mass term is a Chern-Simmons mass gauge invariant master. So with this sort of theory, we can now start applying these concepts to atomic crystals as opposed to a periodic crystals and kind of bridge the gap between the field of periodic photonic crystals, periodic metamaterials and look at this Pico electrodynamics regime of atomic crystals and the electrodynamic waves and the photon mass as well as some topological inversions of this sort of crystals. So what we do is we look at the graphene lattice. That's where we first apply the theory. We turn on the electron-electron interactions so that we think of the hydrodynamic flow of electrons. Then we apply a magnetic field to the 2D material and calculate the atomistic response function, which is this atomistic susceptibility tensor. So in this case, one can show that the susceptibility tensor in the presence of Hall viscosity has to be analyzed not in this conventional Brillouette zone concept and the periodic donut because you have a hydrodynamic fluid. It's a continuum theory. So you actually do not have this donut. Instead, what you actually have, and this is a technical aspect we showed in our paper, is that you have a surface which is closed, which is a sphere crossed with a circle. So it's an S two cross S one surface on which you can study the fundamental properties of the electrodynamic waves interacting with the hydrodynamic fluid. So we proved that there's actually a new topological invariant that is governed with this. And if you have attractive Hall viscosity, the gap is a trivial gap. There's just a simple band gap to waves. But if you have repulsive Hall viscosity, then the in hydrodynamic graphene, the band gap will close on the edge and there will be a one-way edge stick. So let's look at some the simulations of this hydrodynamic system that allows you to understand what's going on. So this is a top view of graphene. Graphene is patterned in this circulator form. So what you see inside these three ports is actually graphene which is patterned and that the rest of the thing is just a substrate. These three are point sources to excite electromagnetic waves. And if you do it carefully within the band gap, then what happens is that you will have edge magnetoplasmons that only move in one direction. And they are immune to back backscattering. And furthermore, these edge magnetoplasmons are robust to boundary conditions and they also close the band gap. So these are hydrodynamic edge magnetoplasmons in graphene, which close the band gap. And a very crucial ingredient in here is that you need to have repulsive Hall viscosity, which is the dispersive photon mass to get this topological phase. For attractive Hall viscosity, you do just do not have such a topological phase of matter at all. So we think this is an interesting theory prediction that can be validated in the near term by studying the hydrodynamic regime of graphene coupled with gigahertz frequency electromagnetic waves and and studying what happens on the edge and in the sub bulk. So with that, I want to quickly go just in a few minutes, talk about the case of silicon. This is a non-topological system. It's a 3D material. We've applied our theory that gives a new eigenvalue problem, which is the Maxwell Hamiltonian eigenvalue problem for the atomic lattice. Think of it similar to the Schrödinger Hamiltonian and Schrödinger eigenvalue problem that we study in textbooks. Now, replace that with the Maxwell Hamiltonian eigenvalue problem using the prescription that I assured before. And then you can solve for the waves, atomistic or picoscopic waves inside this material. And what we showed, and this is a paper which is under review, is that you actually can get a Pico photonic regime where in silicon, within the regime where you normally do not expect any waves to propagate at all. This is the bulk excitation spectrum. This is the macroscopic local theory using the concept of a macroscopic dielectric constant. You have essentially some linearly dispersing regime and then there is a regime where all the light waves are blocked. In that regime, when you look at the atomistic non-local case, you can actually see that it's not just quantitative deviations. There's actually a new branch, this qualitative new physics that appears, which is a completely new branch of atomistic waves that are solutions of the Maxwell Hamiltonian eigenvalue problem. So this is going to be difficult to experimentally isolate because this occurring in the these waves are occurring in the absorptive region of silicon. But we are working very hard to identify other materials and other regimes in which absorption would not cause an impediment to experimental observation. So with that, what I'd like to do is I'll skip over some of the kind of details and just kind of remind you once again that we are excited about this picoscopic electrodynamics regime. And we are trying to bring a lot of different theorists together to solve this problem. You can actually go to our website, picoelectrodynamics.org. This is a theory network. There is a lot of seminars and different researchers coming together. And mainly theorists, but we are also happy to work with experiment lists to try to verify the theory. And we are developing a formalism that uses a Maxwell Hamiltonian other than a Dirac Hamiltonian to understand light waves scattering from an atomic lattice. And we've applied the theory to graphene with repulsive Hall viscosity, proven the existence of a new topological invariant. We've also applied the theory to silicon and shown that in the picoscopic regime, there should exist new solutions to this Maxwell Hamiltonian that leads to new atomistic waves. And we definitely think that the fun has just begun and there should be thousands of materials in which we can try to apply this picoscopic theory and understand more novel effects and hopefully lead to practical devices of technological relevance in the long term. With that, I want to thank the audience and once again acknowledge the committee for this very prestigious lectureship. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you all again. So I appreciate Jacob's great talk. If there is anyone who has question, please raise your hand and you can use the microphone on the stage. I think I may have one simple question. So your very new approach to analyze the light absorption and light matter interaction in your theory. So my simple question is how, how do, how the band structure or electronic structure of material is critical to for your calculation? Because graphene is gamlike and due to some interaction, it may have small gap, but it is totally different from the 3D silicon lattice. So for your conject, Pico electrodynamic picture, how the materials properties matter for your simulation?
Got it. So in in the formalism that I presented, the electronic wave functions are very crucial. What we do is they are used to identify the atomistic susceptibility tensor. That means we try to light down a lattice response function that depends on the electron wave functions and that will be different for different materials and also according to different frequency ranges. And what is crucial is that this response function depends on the frequency range as well as the momentum of the light coming in as well as the lattice symmetries. So the wave functions do enter through that atomistic susceptibility tensor that then goes into the Maxwell Hamiltonian and then we get an eigenvalue equation. So I hope that this flow chart kind of makes or sheds some light on your question.
And in addition, how the topological character of the band is related or critical for your consideration? Because graphene or topological insulator, they have topological character. Does it also influence very critically for your result?
So in this very specific example I gave you, which was actually the graphene, there was the the topological nature is actually in the electrodynamic bands. So the what we have is actually a hydrodynamic fluid because once you because once you start electron-electron interactions, then this conventional band structure picture of graphene doesn't work very well. Because it's really in the single electron picture that you can have very good ideas of band structure. Now, in the case of the electron interacting fluid, we actually have a hydrodynamic dispersion relation of hydrodynamic waves and the topology is defined for the hydrodynamic fluid. So it's very different because we are dealing with kind of topological insulators for electromagnetic waves inside solid as opposed to electron waves inside a solid.
Okay, thanks again for your presentation and answers. So if there is no more question, then let's thank Professor Juvin Jacob again with a big hand.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Yeah, thank you. So I would like to bring my final remark to close by expressing my sincere wish that this session will serve as a valuable opportunity to all the speakers and the participant. Participant and thank you again. And this is, I am now closing this session. Yeah, thank you, thank you all.